I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigant.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation W. Belleville.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
Chief Clay is excused and Assistant Chief Ice Candy is here in his place. Okay, first of all, I want to recognize we have two young men here tonight from Boy Scout Troop 699, is that correct? We have Matthew Fremont and Michael, is it Lesh? And they're here, and what badge are you working on, guys? Citizenship in the Community, I'm familiar with that one. So if you need anything after the meeting, if you need any additional information, feel free, but we're glad you're here. If you guys, you want to come forward and lead us in the pledge, you can step right up here and you can come on up and lead us, so we're going to stand for the pledge at this time for those who are able, you just want to come up to the gate to the microphone there and just, you can start us off. Thank you, gentlemen. Keep getting all those badges. As a longtime Scoutmaster, I think it's great that you're here. Okay, at this time, we have no public hearing this evening, but we will open public participation in just a moment. When I ask if anyone's interested, please raise your hand. When I call on you, please come to the microphone and keep your comments to about two to three minutes, please, and try to keep it on a conversation about Belleville or about what's on the agenda preferably. So if anybody tonight in public participation, I recognize that man, Fire Chief Tom Poor.
I've already been introduced, so I won't go with that. We'll stay on the theme of Boy Scouts. I handed out a flyer this Wednesday at Eckert's. We have a Boy Scout that's been working on his Eagle project and he's building us a memorial to the three firefighters that died in the line of duty in the early nineteen hundreds, and that's going to be at our Station Four. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew, if you have the, you know, are able to go to Eckert's and have dinner, shop, whatever, on Wednesday, if you happen to be there, just make sure and tell them that you would like part of the proceeds to go towards Mr. McKillop's Eagle project.
Good.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We do, gentlemen, when you get farther down the road, we do work with Scouts in various departments on Eagle projects, so that's also another fun thing as you get older. Okay, anybody else in public participation this evening? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor Eckert, ladies and gentlemen, City Council Ron Diedrich, Illinois Realtors, here regarding ordinance eighty-two thirty-seven dash twenty eighteen, fifteen C on your agenda. For a number of years, at least three or four years, our organization, Illinois Realtors, and more locally, the Realtors Association of Southwestern Illinois, have been monitoring the progress of language like this. It's been kicked around a number of times in public health and housing, and most recently, I believe, last week, some additional languages added in ordinance and legal review in terms of the fee structure. Anytime we have government programming that's added that could possibly regulate land transactions with our members, thus slowing the process of home sales or rental, it's always cause for concern, but given the situation of where we find ourselves with this language, considering the genesis was a whole wholesale look at lots, vacant properties, stuff that was even on the market, I believe this is a fair compromise, and certainly be appreciative of the members on public health and housing, especially Mr. Horner's tightening down of the definition more in line with the state standards of a vacant structure. Again, given this program starting, we hopefully, it will remain in the pilot sort of phase has been previously discussed in the committees, because a whole hail, a whole city embracing of this program would cause for concern in terms of the staff's ability to administer it, plus additional programming that is ongoing right now. So that's it, and be looking forward to the discussion later in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation, and we're going to move on to the presentations, recognitions, and appointments. First thing we have is we have a presentation, and I see Larry Betts is here, and if Larry wants to come forward, I think he has a couple recommended, names to recommend that we will be voting on to add to the Belleville Walk of Fame on the square.
Thank you. As you know, we, every two years, even numbered years, we started this in the bicentennial year of two thousand fourteen. We had two to three new members to our Walk of Fame, and the two persons that we have chosen this year, I'm going to read to you briefly what will be on their plaque, assuming you approve this. Excuse me. The first one is Carrie Thomas Alexander Berenberg. She was a progressive activist. I can tell you right off the top, she was a major cog in getting women's suffrage passed in the state of Illinois. She was a Bellevillian. Daughter of prominent civic leader Colonel John Thomas, who by the way, was a Civil War hero from Belleville and lived in a mansion where the United Missouri Bank is now, on North High Street. Alexander Berenberg, in eighteen eighty-seven, took over management of the Belleville Citizens' Horse Railway. In nineteen hundred, she was elected one of the first female trustees at the University of Illinois. She became in nineteen fifteen, the National President of the Women's Relief Corps, the auxiliary of the Grand Army of the Republic that advocated for Union veterans of the Civil War and promoted patriotism. Devotion to women's suffrage led to her organizing the Belleville City League and to hold leadership positions in the Illinois Equal Suffrage Association and National American Woman Suffrage Association. She tirelessly urged city government to impose and enforce prohibition laws. I don't know, so much for that. Carrie was ahead of her time. She was a, very much an activist. The other nominee for induction will be Les Miller, classified as a citizen pitcher. Importance on both of those, by the way. A Belleville native, Miller pitched in the minor leagues after graduating from Belleville Township High School in nineteen thirty-seven. The Detroit Tigers called him up for the nineteen forty-one season. Following service in World War Two, he returned to Detroit in nineteen forty-five and was a member of the World Series Championship Team and set a record by pitching nineteen and two-thirds continuous innings that year. He returned to the family furniture business in Belleville in nineteen forty-nine after three years in the minors, but was a player, manager, and sponsor in county and Montclair leagues. A city alderman from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen sixty-one, he was also a founder of the voluntary association that established Citizens Park in nineteen fifty-eight. Any questions?
We'll have a vote a little bit later in the meeting on the, under communication, so thank you, Larry. Okay, the next item I have is, as I've told you for some time, I guess several weeks now, that we know that Bob Sabo's going to retire from Director of Health and Housing in a few weeks down the road, a month or so, and I've been talked to by many to make sure we find the best possible candidate. Well, fortunate, I was able to run across this gentleman that you have his, I've known him for some time, and I found out that he was interested in coming back to Belleville and to take on a job that was meaningful. Extremely, if you read his resume, it's extremely qualified, but when it comes to management, when it comes to leading people, budgets, leading strategic planning, technology, he's outstanding in this field, and that's, that's a big thing for us these days, to bring every department up to a higher standard of technology. And he, he's got the ability in his training and his massive resume that he can, I think, help us analyze as we look forward, and being a veteran, past commander from the three ninety, three thirty, three, nine thirty-second, I'm sorry, he actually was responsible for transporting the first lady of the President's wife around the world for several years while he was commander of that unit. But he has the ability to help us as we look to, look at how we're doing business and how we reach out to the military here in the city, because that's sometimes been a challenge when we've been, sometimes, people have been critical over the years, is, do we, do we draw in enough military to Belleville? So I think there's a lot of things he can help us do. And we knew it was going to take a person of special talents to replace Bob, but I think this guy really is going to help us move things forward along with Jeff Haidor and in that office, so that we keep moving and that we don't lose traction. So tonight, I'm recommending that you would approve my appointment of John Philipbaum, retired Colonel, and he is, as you saw in his resume, he's got a very extensive resume. He would be paid the same as what's in the budget for Bobby and all the same conditions. There's a few things to work out. We're coordinating, and this is all contingent upon his final drug test and his final background check, but everything so far is moving along fine and looks good, but we, when we wrote this on Friday, we had to, had to put that in there, that we were still waiting for, you know, all the normal HR background things. So at this time, I would, and we, the exact, the exact date of starting, Bobby has said to me for a long time, I need to get somebody here that can work with him for a number of weeks, because there's a lot of moving parts in housing. So we know that we got to get him in here, you know, as soon or the better, as has been said, but we're going to pick a date. I just said sometime in September, we haven't worked out the exact details, and, but we need to certainly let them work together and let him absorb everything he can, so as soon as Bobby departs in October, that this person can stand on his feet, and that's what we want to make sure we give him enough time. So that's why it's written the way it is. If someone's so willing to consider the motion, making a motion to appoint John Roger Wiggington, second by Ed, any discussion? Yes, sir?
I would say, his resume is not only impressive but impeccable. My only question is, would you say he's wanting to come back to Belleville, would he then become a Belleville resident?
Absolutely. You know, absolutely. He was a Belleville resident when he lived here before. He was Tom Poor's neighbor the whole time he was the commander of the nine thirty-second, he was Tom Poor's neighbor in the Arch. So he, he's lived here, but he took a job in Florida when he left here after retirement. And at the time, he came to me at Bell Scott Meeting when he was retiring and wanted to know if I knew of any positions, because he would love to have stayed in Belleville then. And at the moment, I didn't have this or anything like this even to talk about, but when recently somebody told me that he was looking to come back this way, and looking, I think the key word, and Sherry was on the phone with me on two, two phone interviews we've had, and I know the man well, I feel very comfortable, I, I think the biggest thing he said to us numerous times was, "I want to be a part of something that has meaning." And he says, "I like what Belleville's doing and I feel like I can help." And he's, I think he can, but he will certainly be a citizen of Belleville, a resident, has to be. Other, any other questions? Yes, sir?
I just have a comment, and I know that we'll honor Bob on his way out, but, you know, they, between Bob and Alderman Barfield and Jeff and, and Bill Hurling and that incredible staff, they've certainly built a strong foundation for this gentleman to come in and build on. Tough, tough department to run, and I, I hope we all have a chance to talk to him and make him understand that he's got to be accessible to sixteen aldermen. You know, on a Monday morning, it's not out of the realm of possibility that all sixteen aldermen could be calling with problems, and he's going to be saying, "Whoa, I should have stayed in the Air Force."
The reason, the reason I think he'll be okay, right, when he was commander of the nine thirty-second, he had thirty-nine generals he had to answer to at the base.
Right, no, no. I would be a facetious of that, but, but no, I, I think, you know...
He's, he's used to help from above.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Alderman Tyler, that the resume's impeccable, and, but I think our, our housing department has sure laid, laid out a strong foundation and groundwork for this gentleman to come in and, and really move forward and make some changes.
No, I, I agree. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have other comments or questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. I don't have him handy to introduce him at the moment, but Sherry's promised that she's going to text him and tell him it was approved, and that I'll get with him tomorrow, and we'll start talking after Labor Day and some dates when he's going to be up this way, and we'll start the process, but I, I think, I believe we made a good choice here as a team, and I think, I look forward to introducing him to you as we move forward, and, but Bobby's still got quite a few weeks here, and, and then he'll have a number of weeks to work with John as well, so, you know, I'll, I'll let you know when he's here, and you can all make him feel welcome then. Okay, we move on to the regular portion of the minutes of the city council meeting, and, can we do that, and the executive sessions together, the minutes from August sixth, two thousand eighteen. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Motion by Schaefer, second by Tyler. Additions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor to receive and file both sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. Boy, Jamie, three million?
Whoa.
Sheesh. Motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of three million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine sixty-six, and fifty cents. Payroll in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections to the disbursements, claims, payroll, and all that stuff? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a treasurer's report and a statement of cash and investment report, July two thousand eighteen. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Consilla. Do I hear any questions or discussion on this, these reports? All in favor of receiving and filing these two reports for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to oral reports, streets and grades, Alderman Weigant, I mean Wiggington.
Okay, you got it. Eleven dash A, on behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve apparent low bidder for the two thousand nineteen general maintenance stitching program, MFT TIP funds, so moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Steele. Do I have any discussion on this first item? Hearing none, roll call.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington, you got one more?
Eleven dash A two, on behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve apparent low bidder for the two thousand nineteen general maintenance concrete program, MFT TIP funds, so moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Consilla. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to ordinance and legal review, once again, Alderman Wiggington.
Okay, on behalf of eleven dash B one, on behalf of ordinance and legal review committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve amending ordinance title eleven, Business Regulations, Chapter one eleven, Amusement and Recreation Raffles, Section one 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 point zero zero one and one 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 point zero nine four of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Belleville, Illinois, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer. I'd ask for a motion to approve this and have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next one.
On behalf of ordinance and legal review committee, eleven dash B two, I'd like to make a motion to approve amending ordinance title fifteen, Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-eight, Streets, Sidewalks, Trees, Sections one fifty-eight point zero nine one through one fifty-eight point zero nine eight of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Belleville, Illinois, so moved.
Have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear any discussion on this motion coming from ordinance and legal review? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye and have the proper ordinance drawn.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Eleven dash B three, on behalf of Legal and Ordinance Review Committee meeting, committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve amending ordinance title fifteen, Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-four, Property Maintenance Code, by adding Sections one fifty-four point seven zero to one fifty-four point eight three, Vacant Property Program of the Revised Code of the Ordinance of the City of Belleville, Illinois, so moved.
Have a motion by Wiggington, second again by Schaefer. Any discussion on this one? Yes, sir?
Your Honor, our question, we, we are getting an inspection, is it every year for every property? Because it's seventy-five dollar inspection fee. Is that a yearly inspection fee, or is it done one time?
If, if they're vacant.
It's, it's after.
It's after it's determined to be vacant.
Okay, so that's one...
So if it stays vacant for another year, it could be to check the progress.
Okay.
You know, we, we're trying to do is not see them fake it forever, and we're trying to get a timeline where they're living up to a plan of action to not leave homes that are, you know, causing us...
And is there an annual fee then?
There's an annual registration fee.
An annual registration fee?
That's fifty dollars.
Of what?
That's fifty dollars.
Fifty? Thank you.
But the inspection, what happens is after it's determined to be a vacant building within the meaning of this ordinance, then there's a comprehensive inspection, and then there's a requirement that the owners submit a...
Plan of action.
...plan to bring it up to, called a vacant building plan, to bring it up. This is a administrative mechanism that gives, allows the city to address the issues in the hopes of bringing the building up to code rather than leaving it to be in such a condition that would require...
Condemnation. Thank you. Alderman Ovian.
This is the pilot program that we talked about in the Housing Department, where we agreed to allow two parcels that are vacant to be determined by the Housing Director that meets the qualifications to be registered for as, registered as vacant housing. It cannot be, it, it does not look at the condemned properties or the foreclosed properties, it would look at only those properties basically that are vacant, unattended, and it has to be submitted by each alderman. Each alderman gets one parcel.
So, no, that's, that's what we talked about, and I think it's, it's got potential, and I think we got to work through it and try it, but I think the big thing is, what I do see is a real benefit, there are some houses, and we had a couple pretty good examples the other night in housing, that have been nuisance properties for many years, but they weren't quite bad enough per the judge, the roof wasn't falling in yet, that they, that they would fall into the category of being condemned. So unfortunately, they just had to wait till they got worse, and in the meantime, the negative impact on a neighborhood and other neighbors' property values who are trying to keep their homes up has been affected. So we're hoping that with initiative like this, that we can catch some of those and get them, get them, I don't know if you want to use the word forced, but get them to be nudged to come up with a plan and realize if they don't do something, they're going to, they're going to get fines and they're going to have problems, because we can't, some of these properties are just on the verge of, of causing all the neighbors around them a detriment, and so we're hoping this, this is a stimulant.
Let me, let me bring this to life. The property that I looked at a while back, I knew it could be saved, at four North Ninety-Six Street, Franklin Apartments. The Gilman Brothers had purchased it, property inside was vandalized, but the outside structure of the property was solid, and the Gilman Brothers are going to put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into this building complex, they've already started renovations, and it's coming along beautifully, the neighbors are happy, it's going to be a, a good project for the neighborhood.
That's what we're hoping for, so everybody understand. Yes, sir?
Mayor, record of this ordinance is designated as pilot.
Well, just the fact we're stating that we're going to start it, in other words, we're not going to be inundated, everybody's not going to bring in long list and say, "We want them, we want them to be put on the vacant," you know, we got to walk...
The two properties per ordinance is, is what's considered.
Per ward.
Super ward. Two per ward.
This ordinance applies citywide, but it does not require any automatic registration other than for banks who take homes for foreclosure, and that's irrespective of the conditions of vacant...
I'm just looking to what we expect to change.
This is, this is how it's, it's going to be implemented on a, a lack of a, where it's high of basis, because it's the Housing Department that determines whether or not a structure is a vacant building within the meaning of this.
And I'll be honest with you...
Is it the limitation of two per ward that is what makes it pilot?
Yes, because, and I will be honest with you, that was partly my doings, because the staff right now, we do not have the resources at the moment to increase staff, and they're already got their hands full with daily complaints, the ones that are already in condemnation, and all the other nuisance calls that we're trying to abate weekly, that I, I couldn't just open this up, wide open the floodgates, because they would, they'd be over inundated. So we gotta walk before we can run. But I do think this is a good stepping stone to where we need to, where we need to get. So does everybody understand the, yes, sir?
Does this apply to this rental house, houses, trailers?
It applies to, yeah, it applies to property.
All three categories, trailer house and commercial.
It, it can, I mean, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm on that committee, and first I wanted to thank Rafi for the Ninety-Sixth Street, the apartments. I think that's wonderful, and a hundred twenty-five thousand was good with the Gilman Brothers. But he also brought up sixty-three Grand View, which I took a drive by there, and he's absolutely right. That was, that's one of the properties that.
Well, now let's get to the point where condemnation is probably the only answer. But that was the example I used the other night as one. Had this program been in effect ten, fifteen years ago, that sixty-three Grand View was on our radar screen then, but the judge never would file condemnation because it wasn't falling in yet. It had boo coup problems. It was truly a vacant nuisance property. This will help us bring people like that into the courtroom where they're gonna have to present a, a plan to the judge of, of how to get these nuisance things abated. And I think so that's what we need to do. Roger?
You know, what I think about a pilot program, nothing is really etched in stone. We're gonna feel our way. We'll be able to tweak it, maneuver, change it. As we go through the process and the system, we'll be able to really nail this thing down citywide, like Mr. Horner said, and, and really, really be able to focus in on what we want, what we're trying to achieve here.
I agree, I agree. So we have a motion and we have a second, correct? So much discussion, I forgot. So we have a motion and we have a second, coming out of, of the economic, I mean, I'm sorry, it was coming out of, of Ordinance and Legal Review for eleven B four, correct, Jenny? No, eleven B.
Eleven B three.
Eleven B three, I'm sorry, my, my bifocals moved on me. Eleven B three. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I want a roll call on this one.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Roger, last one.
Okay, and Mr. Sabo brought to my attention, I will be adding one word to this as we get down to it, I'll tell you exactly what it is. On behalf of the Ordinance and Legal Review Committee, eleven dash B four, motion to approve amending ordinance title fifteen land usage, chapter 154 Property Management Code, section 154.463 Rental Property Registration of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois, by increasing the annual registration fee from twenty-five to thirty dollars per rental unit, thereby raising the late, I'll be returning to work, late fee from fifty to sixty dollars per unit, so moved.
Have a motion by Alderman Wiggington, a second by Alderman Consilla. Do I hear discussion on these proposal? All in favor, have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
No.
You are opposed. Note that, please, Alderman Bitner. Okay, so we go on now to Economic Development. Alderman Consilla?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Economic Development to approve a development agreement with Yankel and Associates Insurance Services Incorporated for the remodeling and expansion of the existing facilities located at nineteen fifteen and nineteen twenty-one West Main.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pusa. Do I hear discussion on this one? Roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ayes have at fifteen to one. Next, Finance Committee, Mr. Consilla.
On behalf of Finance Committee, I make a motion to accept proposals and alternate between using one eight-hundred board up and Belle Four Property Restoration, both at zero cost to the city for board up services and authorize the city attorney to prepare necessary contracts.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schaefer. Discussion on this here?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to mention that you figure, why does somebody do something for free? Well, the purpose of this, these, these companies also do other services, and if they can board up a property, they have an opportunity to perhaps do some repair there. So that's why they're able to do this. And they do have the facilities and manpower to get it done.
Yeah, we checked that, and we, we had two, two of these similar situations came forward at the same time, so we, we came up with a suggestion to rotate them, and they were fine with that, so that's why we are where we are. Somebody else hit a hand?
I, yeah, just.
Okay, very good, very good. So that's the motion and that's the situation. It's a, it's a good work by Chief Poor. You know, we, we talked about this in committee, and I, I think it deserves to be said. We were very blessed and we were very, in a sense, spoiled for many years, because our dear friend Stan Erlinger came out quickly and took care of these things for us at a very, very, very reasonable cost. And a lot of times would bill the property owner if he could make a contact, but we, when Stan passed away suddenly, we knew we had to do something. And so I understand people having a fee, but when we, when Tom found these two services and how they operate across the country this way, it, it was interesting for us, and we're certainly gonna give it a try, and I think it's gonna work, so we'll see. Yes, sir.
And, you know, police and fire, both these companies, very reputable, gave very good presentations on this.
Yeah.
And what I think what we liked about it was Chief Poor told me before, a lot of times after a fire or whatever, these people would come up and say, well, how are you gonna pay for this? Well, you know, now we don't have to worry, he doesn't have to worry about that. He can, Chief can take care of what he needs to do. These people will bill the, the property assurance companies, whatever the case might be. But like Alderman Consilla said, they do a lot of other services besides just board up windows.
They do a lot of restoration, a lot of remodeling, et cetera, and like I said, that's fine, if they, if the, if the person indicates they want to deal business with them. If they're out there in the middle of the night and making that, you know, making that connection or whatever, that's, that's, that's just their hustling way of doing business, so. So, okay, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation for eleven D one. If there's no further questions, I call for a roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm asking for a motion coming from Administration to approve a letter to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers requesting construction assistance for the East Creek Sewer Separation Project. Motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Hazel. This project is similar to the one some of you might remember, maybe not a whole lot of you, but somebody might here, besides myself. When we did the work, Royce remembers, on McClintock and that area where we did some sewer separation, and we worked with, on McKinley and McClintock, we worked with the Army Corps. This is a similar type program, and it pays seventy-five, twenty-five match, right, Royce?
That's right.
And we were being indicated we had no choice but to do this work in the near future anyway by the EPA, so.
It's mandated.
It's a mandated amount of work. So this comes in very timely for us to take advantage of some funding that we didn't know we were gonna fall into, and I'm, so I, this is to approve the letter that I, we've got drafted for me to sign and to send off, but it looks like everything's gonna fall into place. So everybody understand the motion? Roll call.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to Communications. Is there a problem with any of these reading, not reading them together? Is there any concerns?
Read them together, ma'am.
Huh?
Read them together.
Everybody okay? We're gonna go ahead and ask the city clerk to read them together for one motion.
Twelve A, pedal for pooches, bicycle runs seven, and pause for a cause, Bellevue Humane Society, nine-nine, twenty-eighteen, request from seven to hold the pause for a cause block party on Sunday, September ninth, twenty-eighteen, four p.m. to eight p.m. street closure request, first block of South High Street, between East Main and East Washington, three p.m. to nine p.m. additional request of no parking signs, picnic tables, barricades, sandbags, and trash toters. Twelve B, Paint Historic Bellevue, line air, nine-fifteen, twenty-eighteen, request from the Bellevue Animal Clinic, Bellevue Historical Society, St. Clair County Animal Control to hold the October Dog Stroll through the Historic District on Sunday, October seventh, twenty-eighteen, twelve p.m. to three p.m., no street closures, additional request of a trash toter. Twelve D, The Fest, ten-thirteen, twenty-eighteen, request from Kenny Herzog to hold the annual car show on Saturday, October thirteen, twenty-eighteen, eight a.m. to five p.m. no street closures, request use of city-owned property at nine-hundred Shield Street, additional request of trash toters. Twelve E, Walk of Fame, ten-thirteen, eighteen, request from the Bellevue Historical Society to approve the installation and induction of Carrie Alexander Berenberg and Les Miller to the Walk of Fame at the Northwest Quadrant on Saturday, October thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. Twelve F, Optimist Club of Bellevue Santa Parade, eleven-twenty-three, eighteen, request from Optimist Club of Bellevue to hold the annual Santa Parade on Friday, November twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, ten a.m. to twelve p.m. street closure request, North Third Street from Huff Park to West A Street, eight a.m. to twelve p.m. West A Street to West Main Street, West Main Street, East to Douglas Avenue, ten a.m. to twelve p.m. additional request of barricades, no parking signs, police personnel, public works personnel, and cleanup of parade route. Note, this is an altered route in twenty-eighteen, using the St. Patrick State Route. Twelve G, Oktoberfest of Bellevue banner request, request from the Oktoberfest Committee to hang banners at North Illinois Street, East Main Street, West Main Street, from September seventh through September twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen.
Okay, I just want to note, twelve F, the altered route, I saw a couple eyebrows. We're, we're in concern that the six to seventeen, six to twelve street sewer and those, that projects that just getting started now, if they're not timely or if they're not put back in an acceptable manner, that we could, we can't, we can't get the word out to change the parade route at the last minute. So after we sat and talked, we decided that we just need to go ahead. Probably, it's probably gonna be the next two seasons that we're gonna alter that parade, and it'll be the Shriners Parade, you'll see also, that we'll have to go with what we do. And I don't really like the, you know, I think we're too jammed in there, but we're gonna have to live with it while we're, while we're adjusting with this improvements on West Main. So that's the reason, okay? So I'm asking for a motion to approve Communications, twelve A through twelve G. Alderman Pusa, second by Schaefer. Any discussion on any of these? All in favor of approving all these communications, which includes the two names that Larry presented tonight for the Walk of Fame? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-three, thirty-seven. Motion by Consilla, second by Alderman Ga, to read that motion by title only. All in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-three, thirty-seven, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route one fifty-nine for the Santa Parade, November twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, from ten a.m. to noon.
Motion by Consilla, second by Schaefer. Any discussion on this resolution request? Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Motion carries. I go to ordinance number eighty-two, thirty-eight, asking for a motion to read by title only. Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Dittelman. All in favor of signify by reading that, that ordinance by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-two, thirty-five, twenty-eighteen, and ordinance amending title eleven, Business Regulations, chapter one-eleven, Amusement and Recreation, Raffles, sections one-one-one point zero-zero-one and one-one-one point zero-nine-four, of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois.
I hear a motion. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Wiggington to approve eighty-two, eighty-five, I'm sorry, ordinance eighty-two, thirty-five, as just read. Any discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry.
I have a discussion here which I'm unable to point. I know we're going ahead and allowing the salons to basically perform microblading of semi-permanent eyebrow tattoos without having to go through several licensing, or change, or changing the licensing for this, to allow them to do it. The problem I have is, they're licensed by the Department of Public Health in the state of Illinois, but yet, to my knowledge, they don't go ahead and actually have a business license here in the city of Bellevue. Why not?
I think that was one of the, I think that was one of the items we talked about during the budget, that we talked about expanding the business license to be much more inclusive. And I'll be honest with you, I have every intention of doing that, we just haven't had a free week to even engage anything additional since May first has hit. It's been, it's been a firestorm this summer, week after week for his activity. But I, I think we'll, we will get to that when we sit down, maybe we'll have a month coming up where we can take a deep breath, but we've got other business licenses we all talked about, and we agreed that probably should be licensed. So that is the topic still, is that what we talked about, Jenny?
Correct.
So, that, I hope that answers your questions. It just hasn't been done yet. So we have a motion and we have a second on this first ordinance, eighty-two, thirty-five. If there's no further comments or questions, roll call.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wyga.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.